To order on December 9th, 2021. May I join me in the salute, flag salute, please? Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us the passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. Counsel, would you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Vice President Bonbright.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
And Director Strozier.
Here.
We have a quorum. And I'd also like to call attendance for our student board representatives tonight. We are represented by Paris Quinn and also Caitlin Yeh.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Well, the next, we actually have the pleasure tonight of something we get to do fairly rarely, but it's a deep pleasure tonight to do oath of office for all those board members who were elected in this past election. And actually, there are four of us that get to go through that honor tonight. And we are going to start, I believe, yep, with Chelseaa. Come on up, Chelseaa. And I think we're going to do it at the podium. Is that where we're going to have this happen? Chelseaa McElroy was elected in November of 2021, replacing Director Andrea Cobb in position number four. Is this correct? So you have someone to read the oath for you, and why don't you introduce yourself?
Oh, hi, my name's Chelseaa McElroy, and I'm proud to be here. And this is my mom, Mary Curry. And I come from a long line of educators. My grandmother couldn't be here today. Fay Curry, 39 years at Tacoma Public Schools. Hi, Mom.
Are you ready?
Mm-hmm. I, Chelseaa McElroy.
I, Chelseaa McElroy.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will faithfully discharge.
Oh, that one.
Oh, of the, and the Constitution of the United States of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duty of.
The duties of.
Director of Tacoma Public, Tacoma School District Number 10.
Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Pierce County.
Pierce County.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Chelseaa, would you like to join us up here at the podium with your name right there? Thank you. All right, the next one is Director Cory Strozier, who was appointed in December of 2020. And this is his first election, and he was elected to fill the position to which he was appointed, position number three.
You're a tough act to follow, so forgive me if I mess up, okay? Please repeat after me. I, Cory Strozier.
I, Cory Strozier.
Do hereby solemnly swear that.
Do hereby solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Pierce County.
Pierce County.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome back to the board. Director Strozier, great to have you. All right, next up is Director Enrique Leon, who also has, actually, he's gone through multiple paths to get here. He was appointed in February 2018 to replace Catherine Ushka, Ushka, and was elected after two years, to November 2019, for the remainder of now Councilwoman Ushka's term. And now has just run for his first, first, first six-year term, full term. So welcome to the board for your six-year new term.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my parents, Marjorie, and Enrique Leon. You're on the podium. Help for me in.
He's Enrique R. Leon, and he's Enrique C. Leon. I, Enrique C. Leon.
I, Enrique C. Leon.
Do hereby solemnly swear that.
Do hereby solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Of Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Pierce County.
Pierce County.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
This is really a celebration tonight. Thank you to all the families who have come. So last, I will go. I'm Elizabeth Bonbright, and I was appointed to the board in 2019 to replace Karen Vial and fill out her unexpired term. I have two more years to do that because I was just elected to fill out the remainder of her term. And I'm position five. And with me tonight is my eldest daughter, Megan Thompson, and her partner, Ryan Chambers.
I, Elizabeth Bonbright. Do hereby solemnly swear that. Do hereby solemnly swear that. I will support the Constitution. I will support the Constitution of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution of the State of Washington. Of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Pierce County.
Pierce County.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Well, I think before we go any farther, we're going to take a picture of, let's take a picture of the first, the five of us together for the first time. Okay, so does everybody want to step forward? And we'll do that, and then we will adopt the agenda, which we shouldn't have done.
You guys are okay with social distancing because it's less than 10 minutes if you go quickly?
I apparently stopped the, skipped the adoption of the agenda. So we are going to go back and do the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted. Okay, so that was item number five. We're going to, having done item number six, we are going to skip over to board reorganization, and I'm going to turn it over to our general counsel.
Thank you. It's time that we do our board reorganization and election of officers. The Board of Directors will proceed with the annual organizational meeting pursuant to our policy 1210 as follows. First, I will call for nominations for president to serve during the ensuing year. Then we'll elect the president to serve during the ensuing year. It'll be a roll call vote. Then we will assume the office by the new president. We'll do a little shuffle. And then we'll call for nominations for vice president to serve during the ensuing year. And then again, we'll do a roll call vote. So any, any concerns with that? Questions before we move forward? All right, let's start then. I'll call for nominations for president to serve during the ensuing year.
I'd like to nominate Director Bonbright for president.
Second.
All right, any other nominations for president? All right, we'll take a roll call vote, or we'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor of President Bon, of Vice President Bonbright serving as president will start with Director Leon.
Aye.
And then Director Keating.
Aye.
Director Strozier.
Aye.
Director McElroy.
Aye.
And Director Bonbright.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Congratulations, President Bonbright.
Okay, so then I can, in that role, since we don't have to move, right?
I don't think we have to move.
No shuffling needed.
So that takes care of C, assumption of the office by the new president.
Okay.
And we'll move on now to point D, which is, I'll ask for nominations for vice president to serve in the ensuing year. Any nominations for vice president to serve in the ensuing year?
I'd like to nominate Director Lisa Keating for vice president.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none, we'll move forward with a roll call vote. We'll start again with Director Leon.
Aye.
President Bonbright.
Aye.
Director Strozier.
Aye.
Director McElroy.
Aye.
And Director Keating.
Aye.
And it's unanimous. Congratulations, Vice President Keating.
Yay.
And it looks like you're also in a place on the dais that we don't need to do any shuffling. So that is our board reorganization for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all the, all of my fellow board members. And we're really, look, this is going to be a great year, and I think we're going to work well together. So looking forward to it. Thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Okay, so we are.
That's a long agenda.
It is a long agenda.
I'm good.
And now we're ready to move forward. Okay, so item number eight, recognition of staff, students, and community. And we have done this, this month. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to invite Dr. Forrest Greek up to join us. And before Forrest, as he takes the podium, gets us started, we are ending our calendar year, which outside of schools, everyone else ends their year this time. And I just want to take a moment to thank all of our staff. And although we are proud to recognize a group of folks tonight, there's no one that works harder than our educators. And no one works harder than our educators in Tacoma. We see them every day. They're relentless. And that's our custodians, our security office, our office professionals, our classroom teachers, our student support staff, our transportation, our cab folks, you folks as board of directors. And I just am proud and humbled. There will be never enough time to give thanks for the lives that they continually work to save, support, and help thrive. But it is important that we do pause just for a moment and be grateful because we have a lot of amazing team members in there. And so with that, I'd be proud to introduce Dr. Greek, who's going to highlight a very special group of those folks for us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, and members of the board. On behalf of Tacoma Public Schools and the whole educator initiative, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our school office staff. This group is an amazing group of folks, and that includes our office coordinators, our attendance specialists, our main office secretaries, our school office secretaries, records and scheduling specialists, and attendance specialists. So simply put, this team of amazing educators are the glue that holds schools together. They support teachers, principals, families, and students. They are often the first people to step up to get the work done that is needed to ensure the school day runs smoothly. They are often the first to volunteer to support extracurricular activities and often the last to leave the office or shut down the laptop. We are fortunate to have these amazing people work for TPS. There's a couple pictures of our folks, various schools throughout the district, these next couple slides. And I would like to honor and recognize this group of folks. And in person, Danita Kirkus, if you could stand up in the back there. She's one of our amazing office folks, actually at Delong. And she has been, we've had a lot of conversations with her and the rest of her team, and she's an amazing person, along with obviously most of her colleagues as well, and just rock star group of folks. And so again, on behalf of the whole educator, Tacoma Public Schools, thank you for your service and thank you for your work for the amazing job that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I know for those of us that don't get to get into the schools every single day, but we know who's there working on behalf of our students, we want to thank you. Deeply appreciate all the work that you all do. It's been a very trying 18, 19 months, and.
22-plus.
Okay, 22-plus months, but who's counting, right? And this has been hardest, I think, hit on this group of folks who are front-facing and also within the schools. So thank you very much for all the hard work you do. You are appreciated. Moving on to item number 10, staff report to the board. We have strategic benchmark monitoring report by the partnerships department and Mrs. Amanda Scott-Thomas.
Just want to remind you folks, you as board of directors, you have adopted four strategic plan goals. And one of them is partnerships. And we are very fortunate to have a fearless leader in Ms. Amanda Scott-Thomas, who not only leads a lot of these efforts, but she helps shepherd a lot of us throughout the organization that are developing partnerships. And so every year, for those that are new to watching these, we do two typically reports for a priority benchmark, and one is an end-of-the-year report, as one is the monitoring report. And so it is with pleasure that I give the mic over to Ms. Scott-Thomas.
Thank you, and good evening, President Bonbright, directors, superintendent, or Superintendent Garcia. And to the members of the public, our beloved community, glad to be presenting for you tonight. Again, this is a benchmark monitoring report, so I'll be giving you some data. And this is the beginning of my data report to you. At the end of the school year, I'll have more data that will flesh some of these things out, but I'm glad to report before you today. We'll go to slide two. Just want to remind you and everyone that the goal of partnership for Tacoma Public School is around fully engaging parents, community, and staff in the education of our children. So everything we do, that's the fundamental foundation and mission. Next slide, please. Every year, I come before you to present our volunteer numbers, what we process annually. As you can see, our numbers, which are in the thousands, are 1,198 volunteers were processed the last school year. The last school year would be September of 20, or yeah, 20 to Ju, actually, the end of August of 21. And so for that period of time, we processed 1,198 volunteers. Those, that was what was registered for the 2021 school year. Next slide. You will see the timeline for school closures, kind of what happened that year, during the time of our biggest numbers of volunteers that we register, which is September to October. We are, our schools were actually closed at that time. And so we did have in-school registration of volunteers start back up this year, but for last year, which those low numbers are reflecting, are during the time of school closure. So we're seeing volunteers register again, so I'm excited about that. Next slide. The key findings are, again, the decrease in volunteer registrations due to remote learning from September 20, September 2020 to February 21. We did our hybrid year from March 2021 to June 2021. Annually, again, 50% of our total number of volunteers are registered during that September time. We have the bulk of our volunteers coming in. They're trickling in this year due to COVID precautions. Though volunteerism is increasing, volunteers are trickling in slowly through the building. So I'll be excited to report to you at the end of the year where we're at and what we're trending upward as far as volunteers. And I'll report to you those numbers in May. Just for you to note that our volunteers that are registering this year and on forward are complying with the governor's compliance, the mandate, so they are vaccinated. And if they are applying for an exemption, we direct them to HR for that process. So that's been integrated into the process. Next slide. So our, oh, okay, did we skip one? So the volunteer, next steps are to support the buildings and increasing volunteer engagement, so re-engagement, again, per COVID safety guidelines. We are resuming the centralized volunteer database pilot. I think before COVID, we were talking to you guys about Safe Schools, which is an online system where people check into the building through a little kiosk, and they are, their volunteer background checks are already done. They get a green light and a badge and go in. So we had a small pilot group that was paused because of COVID. So we are relaunching that, looking at analyzing the data that we collected from that, doing another pilot group, and implementing that this year. So it'll be actually slowly but surely, which volunteers are coming in slowly but surely, so it'll be a good pilot. We are also launching, doing the pilot of VOMO, which again, prior to COVID, we talked about our online volunteer management system. Our family and community liaisons will be participating in that pilot, along with a small select group of our community partners. This is sort of like a volunteer, it's a Facebook for volunteers, so you can go on and post your volunteer opportunities. Volunteers can create a profile. The people that are managing their volunteer efforts can send a blast out and say, hey, we have this opportunity, would you like to volunteer? So again, it's an online management system for volunteers. So we'll be starting that pilot in January. The family and community liaisons are ready to go. And this has exciting potential because when we are back up and running full, it will be a great way for us to engage with new volunteers, as well as to really be able to give you some good demographic information on who's volunteering and what type of volunteering is happening in our buildings. Next slide. So this is a priority benchmark, formal partnerships. You will see that for the year 2021, we're up to 366 partnerships. And you will see there's a big jump between that and 2020. The explanation for that is that for the 2020 year, again, our year where there were school closures, we mainly sustained partnerships. And so there weren't very many partnerships created, though there were some. And then also, we've been blessed to have a streamlining of the contracts database. So I'm actually, the partnership office is getting more access to data as far as our formalized contracts that are in our system. So that is also reason for that number jump. So I'm looking at this 2021 number, it's more of a baseline number because everything is in that one system out of the contract office. So that's exciting as well. So there are currently 366 contracts and MOUs in our system. The next slide will show a breakdown of where those contracts are coming out of as far as departments in the district. You will see the top five facilitators for establishing formal partnerships is the community partnership office, planning and construction, student services, secondary ed, and our facilities departments. We do the bulk of partnerships. Though partnership is a district-wide value, and everybody's empowered to facilitate those, and we do provide a lot of technical assistance to other departments. Next slide. So the key findings around formal partnerships is that the data reflects, again, district-wide partnerships as well as the partnership office. I wanted to share some data. I usually report out to you about what happened with Next Move and Summer Jobs 253, which goes on in the summertime. And so due to COVID, there was a lot of having to pivot and do things differently. So we're happy to report that with the Summer Jobs 253, they still had student, 150 students participating in that program, graduate from that program, and for the first time, they had 100% completion rate. So the program was changed where they turned it into a community service model, and so students earned up to $1,000 in one credit for completing 40 hours of community service and financial literacy training that took place online. So again, you see the district is very nimble, people are creative, and our partners got together and made a way for the summertime, the Summer Jobs 253 program to continue. They'll be a little bit differently. Let's see, as far as the partnership office, we did formalize two extended learning opportunities so far for this year. Our goal every year is four to six partnerships, new partnerships in the district. So far, we've got two. There are some in process in the works, so we'll be well on our, we're well on our way to meeting our goal for the year for expanded learning opportunities out of the partnership office. You will also note that these partners that I will be accounting for are going to be district-managed partnerships. We have our new program, Beyond the Bell and Club Beyond, which is our Green Trike organization. They are also onboarding expanded learning opportunities and getting those into schools. And so they're managing those partnerships, but we're working in alignment. But we do have other partnerships that aren't in that system, and so I'll be reporting to you on those. All right, next slide. Oh, before we move, I wanted to talk about a new exciting internal partnership. We are, the partnership office, myself and George Pete out of Title I are doing monthly virtual parent convenings. And so we're online on Zoom. Our next one is actually next Tuesday. We have an international speaker on internet safety. We got the topic because at our first meeting, parents expressed what they were interested in, in internet safety, because of, you know, the internet and all the changings and changing and staying up to date, they wanted more information about that. So that's going to be happening on next Tuesday at 6:30. It's an hour, and it's on Zoom. And so that's exciting. We'll be doing that every month. Did you have a question?
I do. Is that available to any family?
The entire district. So that, the information went out to, through the family and community e-newsletter. It's gone out through the schools, and it is open to adults. So yeah, adults, of our parents, of our students, and families, because it's on Zoom. We can record it. Okay, we can record it and make it available.
Yes, thank you.
No problem. All right, next steps, priority benchmark for the volunteers. My next steps are to facilitate, again, the transition of our non-district managed partnerships to the Green Trike and Club Beyond and Beyond the Bell programs. Farren Johnson and I are working hand-in-hand and really also trying to do some alignment with our orientation and processes so that everybody that comes into our system is getting the same orientation, the same training. So that's exciting, and we've begun work on that. We are also aligning processes around safe school training, our data sharing agreements. I wanted to thank the board for your budget yes for me. I got a chance to reorg in my office as well. And so during the pandemic, it was a lot of time for reflection, looking at the way that we can work to do better. And so I put in for two positions in our office, a project specialist position and an office tech. It did cause some reorganization, so I no longer have a secretary, but I have a office tech that is doing 20% of my administrative services. But she's also able to create forums, be able to update our website, and manage some of the technical stuff to get us kind of, you know, up and going, next leveling it. So I'm really excited about that, and I want to say thank you for that decision. And they're going to help with a lot of the stuff that I'm talking about as far as improving our processes. And the idea is to be more, to do more system work and get out of like perpetual response mode, because we're doing that a lot too. So I'm excited. So thank you for that. Her name is, the project specialist name is Victoria Keys. You'll eventually be meeting her. And then we have Renee Schwitzer, who came out of our Title I department as a program secretary, is now our office technician. So super excited, thank you for that. And I think you're going to see some robust work, more work coming out of the partnership office, so I'm elated. Let's see. The other thing that's on our next steps list is again, aligning those systems, managing partner data requests. We are developing the partnership portal so that our partners can pull data. That's in the works, it's still happening, but it is great to have a person that is employed by the district able to go into the system and for partners that. by the district able to go into the system and for partners that have a data sharing agreement to be able to pull those reports. So that's a capacity that we haven't had in our office, and now because of this hire, we do have that. So she's been able to meet some of those data needs, which is, the partners are extremely happy about. Then also, we are going to be building an internal hub, an inventory of family and community engagement resources to support parent and student voice in our equity design part of that work. I don't know if you've visited my esteemed colleague, Justina Johnson's Equity Hub, fabulous, if you haven't seen it. And so the partnership office wants to have a hub like that, where you can go in for resources around family and community engagement, find out what community events, what partnerships we have, all internal. And then the next phase of that work will be our external partner, or a lot of information will go to our external stakeholders. So those are our next steps. Super excited about the year, super excited to be back in person and working with a new team. So did anybody have any other questions for me?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. And who, anyone? Dr. Leon?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Scott Thomas. You do amazing work. I think you've mentioned it's going to be more robust. It's been robust already, so it's just going to get better, I think, with more staff. So thank you. I think you've alluded to this a little bit, you don't have the final numbers on volunteers yet, but what would be, I think, a successful goal, do you think, for, who knows, January mid-year or something like that, compared to what we've had before? I know, just roughly speaking, you know, the vaccination rate in the community is about sixty-five percent, so that knocks out thirty-five percent of previous volunteers, we'll just say. So we probably can't get back to normal levels this year.
Right.
What do you think's a good goal?
So I would think a good goal, by the end of the school year, that we were trending upward. My goal is to get, we were at six thousand and we were trending downward. My goal would be the trend to go upward. And I'm thinking it would be great to have three to four thousand by the end of the school year. That's a big number. The other thing that's happening as well with our volunteer counts is that some of our volunteers are engaging through community partners, and we're not necessarily counting those. And so, again, building these systems will help that and will be able to count from some of the volunteers that we're not catching. So I don't really know. We'll see. And I know that schools are opening up and folks are trickling back in, but it just kind of depends on, you know, what's happening at the time, what kind of opportunities are available for folks. So we'll see. I don't know.
Okay. I'm glad you mentioned that nuance about some volunteers are working through partners. So when they do that, we don't count them as volunteers in our buildings. That volunteer count is people in our buildings, not people that maybe serve our students but are working through partnerships outside of our buildings. Is that correct?
Right. So they may be in our buildings, but their process for registration, where that data gets pulled, is not, we don't get that. It's not through our watch process, it's through another watch process. So we don't get that information. So there might be a way to get that information, and again, we're aligning systems so we'll be able to get better data for you.
Okay.
That's great.
It brings up, I mean, kind of a point that was, I wanted to, I was going to call out partnership you have with Tacoma Boat Builders, which is a group that helps, they don't just build boats, but they help with kind of at-risk or kids that have been in the court and legal system. So I'm just going to brag on my dad because he's here. He's a volunteer in Tacoma Boat Builders, and I know I've heard some amazing stories of the work that his partners have done with kids and to get them to work with their hands, build things, not just boats, they build all kinds of things with wood and other items. And he's a master woodcarver and woodworker, and so are his partners. And that's just one of many partnerships. So I think that that's so important to highlight all these other partnerships you have. I mean, the numbers skyrocketed lately that you have. So thank you very much for doing that. I think that's what happened.
Thank you. Director Strohscher, do you have anything you want to ask?
We're good.
Yeah.
Director McElroy?
First, thank you for all that you do, Ms. Scott Thomas. As a former ELO partner, I just want to really say that the way the onboarding is being readjusted now to aligned, it's really going to help small providers like myself. It was like me and two other people. So reading the report and how you're going to be streamlining that process, how you're going to be counting volunteers, and how we're keeping track of who's entering and exiting our buildings, it's really important to me. I'm a preschool teacher, so I always want to know like who's there. So I'm really thankful for your report, and I'm happy to see the growth in how you'll be streamlining partnerships going forward and how they'll be, you know, we're all doing the whole child work, but how are we really aligning if we're not even in the same database? So I really appreciated your report today.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Keating?
Yeah, and I would like to piggyback on that. As also a former small ELO provider, like, it was really challenging to navigate the system and figure out, like, I don't even know what forms to fill out, and there was really, at the time, not a lot of guidance. So this is a very exciting thing because we have a lot of people in our community who are individuals that can provide, you know, different kinds of programming. And so making it more accessible is, it's just exciting. And then I had two other, well, I had a thought to build on Director Leon as well around wondering about with the vaccinations being eligible for five and up, if that won't increase families or parents and caretakers who can come into the buildings? Because I know there are still a lot of families who have young kids in their house that aren't vaccinated, so I would imagine that that would help increase the level, that would aid to an increase in volunteers. And also, yeah, your office, seriously, like, I love this report every time you come. Like, I'm so excited. And then the other, the question I had is about the family engagement liaison. How many do we have right now in the district?
So currently, there are nine. There are a mix of family liaisons and community liaisons, and they are, we had two new community liaisons join the team this year, and so that number can fluctuate with more community liaisons being brought on. But yeah, it's a limited number in the district, but they do a massive amount of work in the building.
Yes. Can you just, for clarity, can you differentiate between the difference between a family engagement liaison and a community, did you say a community?
Community liaison. Yeah, so family liaisons, originally, when the position came through the funding stream, it was for a certificated staff person. So the principal, building principal had, could choose between a counselor, social worker, or family liaison position. So the family liaisons that we have are certificated teachers that have moved into this role. Community liaisons do not have to be certified, and most of those are coming from the community, which is exciting because that's what you want. A mix of folks that know kind of education language and the systems, and then community people working together. So it's a beautiful mix of group of people that I get to work with.
That's fantastic. So the, for the pilot program that you mentioned with the family engagement liaisons, so how, will there all be nine, or is that seven? Because you also, my math, don't test my math right now.
No, I work with all of them. So if they're a family liaison or a community liaison, they join our group, and I provide PD for them every month. We're engaged as a team. So they're not evaluated by me, but they get PD from me, and I support their work because it aligns with the work of the Community Partnership Office.
Okay. And are all nine of them part of the pilot program that you mentioned?
Yes, yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Everyone done? Well, I'll just say, I'm always amazed when you come and present, because I just, the enthusiasm and the energy. And I want to go back to slide seven for a second, if we can. Perfect. Oops, we were there, and then we weren't. One more back, I think, yeah, that one. Thanks. And I just want to highlight for, you know, how exciting this is, because we know how much you do on a regular basis. And I think that this is a great slide, because what we're doing is we're, you know, really appreciating that, that this demonstrates that partnerships is part of the TPS ecosystem, and that it's happening all throughout our system and all of our departments, all of our schools, everyone's working on the partnership. But I also want to acknowledge that, you know, you provide the value and the enthusiasm and a lot of the, and you, and the partnership team really leads this work. And so I want to commend you for that and to say, I really like it better that we can more accurately represent the number of partnerships. And again, also appreciate that while you're not doing all of these partnerships, you're providing the heart and the wisdom and the values behind them. So thank you to you and your new team. Very exciting. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to the end of the year report.
Me too. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks so much.
All right.
Okay. Back to the agenda.
Madam President, I just want to add one little subtlety to the data regarding volunteers. You saw the slide, you know, our educators have overcome multiple modalities as we've gone through this. And what sometimes, sometimes it's lost on us is the understanding of how COVID continues to change and evolve. In the fall, we didn't have the opportunity for even our volunteers to come in.
Right.
So, you know, it is, if you are interested in volunteering and you're out there and you'd like some more information, we'd welcome that opportunity because now with the new guidance based on the programs and there's opportunities more and more unfolding, so please reach out if you have that.
So where, where would a volunteer reach out?
Ms. Amanda Scott Thomas of the Partnership Office has an amazing staff that would be able to do that.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. All right. We are moving on to item number eleven, members of the public wishing to address the board. Please note the alternative protocols. School board members are encouraged, encourage public participation. Your civic input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at the meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@takoma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability or COVID accommodations. So we have two options for presenting to the board. The first one is an in-person, at an open meeting like this, where the general counsel will call your name. When it's your turn to address the school board, please speak into the microphone and leave your mask on while speaking. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there's a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. General counsel, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We did have one speaker sign up, Maria Rubatino, regarding uniforms at Meker Middle School.
Is Maria Rubatino here? Give her a second.
And I'm not seeing Maria. We'll move on to recognizing our second option, which is written comment. And we did have two members of the board who submitted written public comment. Their written comments are linked on the agenda. And the first one was Andrew Paulson regarding restoring SROs, and the second was Andrew Paulson regarding TikTok fire alarm at Mount Tahoma. And so just one more time, is Maria Rubatino here?
Okay.
That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item number twelve, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, and it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions or comments about any items on the consent agenda? For the public, I'd like to mention while we're thinking about that, that every, that the board members have this ahead of time, and every item on the consent agenda has been reviewed by the board members ahead, like everything else on the agenda, so. All right. If there are no more comments, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes five to zero. Now, moving on to policy matters, and we have several items on the policy matters, and we have several, and I guess we turn this over to the general counsel.
Thank you. Item thirteen point one is the first reading of new policy sixty-sixty, which is uncollectible accounts. The district's general counsel recommends that the board review the proposed draft of new policy sixty-sixty and provide feedback before a second reading. And there's no action required tonight, but just to give you some quick background, the district does not currently have a policy regarding uncollectible accounts, and likewise, the Washington State School Directors Association does not have a model policy. Our finance team uses GAAP, the generally accepted accounting principles, to guide their accounting practices, and so they're following GAAP principles in this policy. This policy, we would set out, though, the board's direction, that they intend for the finance department to review debts that are not collectible so that they can be written off and no longer are on the books. So this policy will go through our regular review process, which includes cabinet, principals, and our equity policy review team, before coming back to you for a second reading.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of the board about this item? Seeing none, counsel, please continue.
Thank you. Item thirteen point two is the second reading of new policy thirty-four eleven, accommodating students with seizure, disorder, or epilepsy. The district's general counsel recommends that the board adopt the new proposed policy thirty-four eleven.
Okay.
And we'll need to have the board adopt the motion.
Do we have any, anyone?
Adopt the agenda item.
I move to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments on this?
And if you'd like for me to provide some additional background, there are approximately ninety students that are impacted by seizure disorders in our district. There was some recent legislation that was passed in Washington. This new policy will keep the district in compliance and ensure that we're meeting the legal requirements and the best practices to keep these students safe. This policy has gone through our full review, including cabinet, the equity policy review team, and principals. And in addition, based upon feedback from the equity policy review team, we also had some school nurses engage families who have students with seizure disorders to review this policy and received feedback from those families as well. So with that, we recommend that we adopt this policy.
So any comments based on new information? Okay, awesome. And do we need, is it a voice choice?
You'll make a motion, yes.
But we've already had a motion and a second, so is there a?
Oh, so now you go ahead and do it.
Or did we, or is that the last one?
The vote to adopt. All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. It's passes five to zero. The item thirteen point three, the second reading of revised policy six-two-two-oh bid requirements.
The district's general counsel recommends the board review the proposed revised draft of policy sixty-two-twenty and provide feedback before a second reading. And this one, we also don't need to take action, as this is a first, actually, this is a second reading. Sorry, the language is strange on there, so we will need a motion to adopt this item.
Do we have a motion to adopt this one?
I move to adopt.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any, any questions about this one?
Would you like some additional context on this one? Thank you. The purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that the district gets the best value and also complies with state law regarding fair bid practices. This policy has been reviewed, and it also has an accompanying regulation that has also been updated and approved by cabinet.
All right. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. It passes four to zero with one abstention. Great. Moving on to item fourteen, financial report. The district's next financial report is planned for March twenty-twenty-two. Monthly financial statements can be found on the website at www.takomaschools.org/departments/businessinfinance. Moving on to item fifteen, curriculum and instruction. Item fifteen point one, approval of acceptance of partnerships from Social Emotional Learning Initiative Grant Amendment Number Four from the Wallace Foundation.
The superintendent recommends that the board of directors approve acceptance of the partnerships for Social Emotional Learning Initiative Grant Amendment Number Four in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the Wallace Foundation for the period of September first, two thousand twenty-one, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Funding source, the Wallace Foundation.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fifteen point one.
Thank you, we have a motion, and we have a second.
I second.
Motion moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero. Item fifteen point two, approval of acceptance of Title One Part A Closing Educational Achievement Gaps Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The superintendent, on behalf of the executive director of Student Services, recommends that the board of directors approve the acceptance of Title One Part A grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of ten million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, and expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did we move in second?
Yep, we did that, didn't we?
Oh.
Oh, maybe I skipped it. Thank you, good catch. She's paying attention. Awesome. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move.
I second.
I moved and seconded. All those, anyone interested? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any, or any abstentions? Okay, passes five to zero. Item 15.3, approval of acceptance of Special Education IDEA Part B grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends the board of directors approve acceptance of the Special Education IDEA Part B grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $6,866,629, and the expenditure of funds in accordance with Accepted Guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Do I have a motion? This item?
I move to adopt item 15.3.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes five to zero. Item 15.4, approval of acceptance of OSSI Comprehensive School Improvement Grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the board of directors approve acceptance of the OSSI Comprehensive School Improvement Grants from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $325,000, and expenditure of funds in accordance with Accepted Guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes five to zero. Moving on to item 15.5, the approval of acceptance of Title III English Language Learners Grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
The superintendent recommends that the board of directors approve acceptance of the Title III grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $453,952, and expenditure of funds in accordance with Accepted Guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion for this item?
And make a motion?
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on this, on this item?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
This is just one of the many examples of how our district works on equity around different cultures and languages. So I just want to just call that out there, everybody understands how important it is to be able to communicate with folks and their families.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, passes five to zero. Moving on to item 15.6, approval of acceptance of Title VI Indian Education Grant from Department of Education.
The superintendent recommends the board of directors approve acceptance of the Title VI Indian Education Award from the Department of Education in the amount of $209,957 for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and the expenditures of funds according to Accepted Guidelines. Funding source, Department of Education.
Do I have a motion for this item?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? It passes five to zero. Item 15.7, approval of acceptance of the BEST Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the board of directors approve acceptance of the BEST Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $300,000, and expenditure of funds in accordance with Accepted Guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Do we have a motion for this item?
I move to adopt item 15.7.
It's been moved. It's, do we have a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded. Anyone have questions on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? All right, it passes five to zero. Moving on to item number 15.8, approval of acceptance of the TPEP Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the board of directors approve the acceptance of the TPEP Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $107,605, and the expenditure of funds in accordance with Accepted Guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in, oh, does anyone have a comment or question on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, it has passed five to zero. Moving on to item 15.9, approval of the acceptance of the OSSI District Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the board of directors approve acceptance of the OSSI District Grant in the amount of $320,000 from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Construction from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, in accordance with Accepted Guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Thank you. Do we have any motion for this agenda item?
No.
It's very intimidating.
I move to adopt item 15.9.
I second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Yay. Anyone have any questions about this item? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so it passes five to zero. Item 15.10, approval of the interlocal agreement between Edmunds College and Tacoma Public Schools for college and the high school program for the 2021-2022 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Executive Director of Secondary Education, recommends that the board of directors approve the interlocal agreement between Edmunds College and Tacoma Public Schools for college and the high school from October 15, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Okay, do we have a motion for this one?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So is this, I know that we're partnered with our local community colleges and things like that here in Tacoma and in the region, so this is just kind of an extension of that, but with Edmunds Community College?
Correct. Edmunds provides certain classes that some of the other colleges don't provide, and gives students an opportunity, I believe this is Mount Tahoma High School.
Yeah.
That gives them an opportunity to take the class where they wouldn't have that opportunity if they didn't have this program.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One more part of that. So in the current considerations, it mentions also an agreement between University of Washington and us in the same document. Are Edmunds College and University of Washington connected? Is that why they're both in there?
I don't think so.
I believe that's a type error, so we can correct that. So please amend the agenda item. The agenda item's accurate, but the current consideration is not to do with the University of Washington.
Okay.
All, all Washington State, WSU and UW, they're partnered with all of the technical colleges and community colleges, so that might be why it's included, but I don't know why, but.
Yeah, there, you are correct, but in this situation, this one and your agenda item is specific for Edmunds Community College.
Got it.
For a specific course.
All right, so all those in favor with the amended description, the item stays the same, but say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that item passes five zero.
Thank you.
Now, thank you. So, business matters. Item 16. Moving to item 16.1, approval of contract with Borderland for the purchase of Content Keeper Internet Filtering System.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the board of directors authorize the purchase of the Content Keeper Internet Filtering Solution with an estimated three-year cost of $302,850. Funding source, technology levy.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, any, we have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions on this item? Yep, Director Keating?
I just was curious, for the public, could you explain, just give a little context to what this, what this means?
Sure. This is what keeps us CIPA compliant, which is the Children's Internet Protection Act, which allows us to apply for E-rate refunds for our networking equipment, but the primary purpose of this system is to filter the internet for staff and students. So we filter out access to inappropriate material.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay, or any abstentions? All right, it passes five to zero. Item 16.2, approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price, the GMP Amendment Number One, to the Contract Number TSD-21-146 between the Tacoma School District Number 10 and Absure Construction for the Safety and Security upgrades bundle project.
Based on approval of this item today, we will commence installation of the camera systems beginning Christmas break. It's a two-to-three-week process per site at these seven sites. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the board of directors approve the GMP Amendment Number One, which states the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP, for the purchase and installation of CCTV cameras at the following TPS sites: IDU High School, Lincoln High School, Falls High School, Stadium High School, Silas High School, Mount Tahoma High School, and First Creek Middle School. And authorize a superintendent or designee to sign said GMP Amendment Number One in an amount of $1,973,516, excluding sales tax. Funding source, capital projects bond as approved by voters on February 11, 2020.
Great. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt.
All right, do we have a second? Perfect. Moved and seconded. All those, any questions?
I have a question. Are there any other middle schoolers, or any other middle schools in the district that will also have this?
For these first sites, no, but building our bond package, yes. We will be installing cameras at all our middle schools.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? All right, it passes five to zero. Thank you. All right, on to other business. We still have three big things to do. 17.1, approval of Resolution Number 2105 proclaiming January 2022 as Tacoma Whole Child Month.
The superintendent recommends that the board of directors proclaim January 2022 as Tacoma Whole Child Month and encourage community partners, municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for a whole child approach to educating and serving the children of our community. And with that, I also have our very own Whole Child Champion, Director Laura Allen, here tonight to read you the resolution that you're considering.
Okay.
Good evening. Our proclamation reads as follows: Whereas each student deserves to be challenged academically, exposed to a comprehensive education that promotes critical thinking and creativity, and prepared for higher education, meaningful employment in our global economy, and lifelong success. And whereas every student has a right to be supported in their journey of becoming compassionate and kind by educators who are qualified and caring adults, and have access to personalized learning opportunities. And whereas every student has a right to learn about and practice a healthy lifestyle in an environment that is physically and emotionally safe, to be empowered to advocate for the social, physical, and mental wellness of themselves and others, take advantage of resources for a healthy well-being, and be hopeful about the future. And whereas every student has a right to opportunities to discover their passions, be curious, love learning, be actively engaged in and connected to school and the broader community. And whereas every student deserves to feel valued, respected, and cared for, and uphold social justice and equity concepts and practices, mutual respect for individual differences, allowing all students to thrive as their authentic selves. And whereas every student has a right to access in-school and extracurricular community-based programs, to provide students with experiences relevant to their individual civic and higher education goals. And whereas every student has a right to attend schools that are safe and inclusive, welcoming, and supportive of their development as critical thinkers who contribute to our global and natural world. Therefore, I request on this day, ninth day of December 2021, that the board of directors of Tacoma Public Schools declare the month of January 2022 as Tacoma Whole Child Month, and encourage our community partners, municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for a whole child approach to educating and serving the youth of our Tacoma, Tacoma community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Yeah. I second.
Okay.
I know, we're all like, we're gonna do it.
Whole child, whole child.
It's been enthusiastically moved and seconded. Does, does anyone have any comments? I'd like to, I'd like to say, did you have something?
Sure, I mean, you've said a little, Director Allen, thank you for leading this part of our, you know, our district. Really, everyone's working on this, right? So it's, it's, you're leading the whole, whole district here, and we hope that the whole community can come behind. I mean, the things you mentioned around just health, mental and physical, obviously, and social justice is so important. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
And you, you made an excellent presentation to Edwaza a few weeks ago on the same subject.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Yeah, I got some. The, I would just say that the, I appreciate this because proclamations are cute, but the action is what matters, and I am just ecstatic to proclaim January as Whole Child Month for the simple fact that I know that our district, day in and day out, does the work to support the whole child, not just now, but always have been. So I just appreciate that, appreciate your presentations at Edwaza for sure, and for reading the proclamation today.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, I'm wondering if you would, I know that we have, have been taking the lead in this and have doing, working hard to get other school districts in Pierce County and across the state to, to also learn more about this and adopt similar proclamations. And I also want to commend you, Laura, and your team, and the superintendent, and the entire school, and everyone who's so committed to this work for the social, emotional well-being and the health and mental health of our, of our students. And it is, this is one of those things that's really great to be a model and to be leaders in, and so I, I think we all really appreciate the work and are happy to, to join this proclamation. So, thank you. So with that, I'll ask for a vote.
Would you like a roll call vote as it's a resolution?
Oh, that's right, it's a proclamation, we have to, I mean, resolution, we have to have a roll call.
As a resolution, yes. So, starting with President Bonbright.
Aye.
Vice President Keating.
Aye.
Director Leon.
Aye.
Director Stroger.
Aye.
And Director McElroy.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
Perfect.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work and your team's work. All right, going up, let me close that down. Item 17.2, ratification of the 2021-2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the Membership of the Tacoma Federation of Education Support Professionals Local 461.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the board of directors ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma Public Schools, excuse me, between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the Membership of the Tacoma Federation of Education Support Professionals, AFT, Washington Local 461, AFL-CIO.
Great. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you care to expound upon what this is for the public?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is a conclusion of bargaining with our educational support professionals, and it is an absolute honor to be here this evening representing the district in this endeavor. The educators who worked so closely with us on negotiating this agreement are absolutely dedicated and valued whole educators for this district. The collective bargaining agreement represents some equalization when comparing ourselves to our comparator surrounding districts for wages, and it also represents some working conditions that absolutely highlight and enhance the working environment for these valued employees. We truly value the partnership that we have with these individuals who support our students day in and day out, some in individualized settings and some in whole-class settings, and some for school support. So again, it's an honor to be here and represent a conclusion of negotiations that really are exemplary in supporting our education support professionals.
And just as a point of clarification for, because this is a new, new name or new term or more familiarly known as. or new term or more familiarly known as paraprofessionals, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. And you'll still hear that title because in, in some forums, it's still known as paraprofessionals. And then AFT is making that transition over to that term that is closely aligned with our TEA partners and how that affiliate represents the, the title of this particular position.
Well, that's fantastic. And I just want to say from my perspective, having been on the board for two years now, that it has been important and a, and a, and a sort of a mission of the board to make sure that this group of staff are appropriately represented and, and compensated. And so I want to thank you and the whole team for all the work that you've done to make sure that that happens.
Thank you. And in turn, I would like to thank the board's leadership and the compass and direction that was provided in support of these valued employees for the conclusion of this collective bargaining agreement.
So, do we, we already do a motion, it seems like so long ago.
There is a motion.
It was moved and seconded, okay, awesome. So, anyone else have any comments? All right. So, having said that, is this something that needs a roll call or not? We're ratifying of our?
Yes, we should, yes, thank you. Voting on ratifying the collective bargaining agreement, we'll start with President Bonbright.
Aye.
Vice President Keating.
Aye.
Director Leon.
Aye.
Director Stroger.
Aye.
And Director McElroy.
Aye.
The resolution, the ratification is approved five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Going on to 17.3, another big item, Pointing Members to the FOR and the AGAINST Committees for the Proposition 1 and 2 on the February 8, 2022 ballot.
The Executive Director of Communications recommends the Board of Directors appoint Mayor Victoria Woodards, CEO and President of the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce, Tom Pearson, and Educator Emeritus Willie Stewart to the FOR Committee for the Educational Programs and Operations Levy, also known as Proposition 1, and the Technology Improvements and Upgrades Levy, also known as Proposition 2, on the February 8, 2022 ballot.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can you clarify, you didn't read anyone for the against, and I know that's part of this as well. Can you clarify why that?
Absolutely. Part of our requirement when we put a ballot issue before the voters is to solicit people who are willing to write the FOR statement and the AGAINST statement. We put out a news release and promoted the opportunity through social media for people to step forward, and we got no, no one stepping forward to represent the AGAINST side. So, if that occurs, then we forward the, the names that we do have and that you end up approving for the FOR statement. And it becomes the responsibility of the Pierce County Auditor to solicit AGAINST people willing to write the AGAINST statement. And as has occurred in the past, sometimes no one steps forward and there will be no AGAINST statement. And the Auditor will, will attempt to find someone to represent that side.
Thank you, that makes that more clear. All right, does, is this also something that needs to have a roll call vote? I don't know.
It doesn't need it, but if you'd like it, we certainly can.
I, I guess.
Let's go ahead, let's do a roll, three for three tonight.
Three for three, okay. These are all the big ones, so.
They are big, it is, it is a big, important issue for our community. So, President Bonbright.
Aye.
Director Keating, or sorry, Vice President Keating.
Aye.
Director Leon.
Aye.
Director Stroger.
Aye.
And Director McElroy.
Aye.
The appointing is approved five to zero.
Okay, awesome. Whew, we got through the, all the items on this agenda. Wow, that was impressive. And now we move to the Board Comments and Reports. And Chelseaa, for your benefit or Director McElroy, sorry, for your benefit, what we do now is everybody can share the committees that they are assigned to for, to represent the board and the community, what's been happening with that or other community events that they've attended or any updates or comments that are relevant. And so that's what we do at this point at the end of the agenda. And also, I apologize, I have not reached out to the student reps at all during this meeting, and I meant to, so I just want to start with them. So, I know that Paris is here, and did we say?
Kaitlyn is also here.
Couldn't see her behind Renee.
I'm blocking her.
Hi, Kaitlyn, so would, would either one of you like to go?
No pressure.
Yeah.
But if you'd like to.
You don't, you don't have to, but if you've got something to share and say, we'd be, we'd love to hear it. And reintroduce yourself, please, for the record.
Okay. I'm Paris. I go to Mount Tahoma, I'm the student representative. I know that the SRO and the Mount Tahoma Fire Alarm Situation was gonna come, so that's when I was gonna talk. Would you just like me to share now? Sure. Yeah. Okay, so I did send in a report because I wasn't here last meeting, so I thought that's the least I could do. And in that report, it definitely talks about how the fire alarm, how do I say it? How the fire alarm, how students reacted. It talked about how teachers reacted. The security situation and cameras on that report. If you haven't read it, there's different perspectives. There's a student perspective, there's a staff perspective, and then there's my perspective as representative. And most of the information's in there, and I really do think if you haven't read, you should because those are the biggest issues. And when it comes to, there's a lot of good things going on in our school, but when it comes to diversity, when it comes to representation, when it comes to supportive students, when it comes to even supportive staff, that is somewhere we're lacking because, and we see that, even on the teacher situation, because teachers do voice how they feel. And it's really passionate because sometimes they do voice that in their classrooms and conversation. So I do think that's something we should talk about, and we should maybe get a plan on. I do understand that students at Mount Tahoma, I won't say students because I'm a student, but my peers at Mount Tahoma are, things are going off the wall, but I think that's also something to talk about and get a plan on because most of them, especially freshmen, did not have any type of transition. It was more of stay-at-home high school. So I do think that's something to talk about to maybe get them more involved and more happy about school and ready to really learn instead of it being like a babysitting situation. But that's all for me, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Paris.
So, question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I didn't read the report, was that, was that made available to all of us?
I didn't get the report, so I'm not quite sure what report we're talking about.
So, would it be appropriate to have more detail?
Yeah.
I'll reshare it, actually, I think I can pull it up. But I'll reshare, I thought I sent it through, but I guess I did not.
I'll follow up with you, Paris, and get it and make sure that all the members of the board receive it.
Of course, I, I can send an email thread, I thought that that would be included, but that wasn't, so that's fine. But yeah, I'll make sure I get it sent out to all of you guys by tonight. I think it's definitely worth reading.
Perfect.
And it was also addressed in the, the written comments written in. Both of the, what she just discussed was?
Well, what the gentleman was gonna talk about, right. But I'm looking for her report that we didn't get.
Oh, I know, I was just saying.
Okay.
Can I add to this? So, I did receive that, and the myofolies, it was just kind of a crazy thing, so I did not get the rest of it. So I will send that tonight to everybody.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Tracy. No, no problem, thank you. So, thank you, Paris, for, for doing that, appreciate that. And we'll all read it and have some thoughtful comments for you. Kaitlyn. And remember to reintroduce yourself.
Yeah, so I'm Kaitlyn Yet, I go to Stadium High School, and I'm also a student representative. On a less serious note and like not as official, Silas is having a school dance this Saturday, and I think it'd be good to get all city senate, like, meetings started, so just to hear like how it went and how they went about it. Because we're not really, I know the ASB advisors are meeting up and talking about it on Tuesday, but hearing it from another student would be good and kind of, all the ASBs will kind of be able to know how they can commence with dances and possibly prom. And then also, just something fun, like, all the daffodil princesses have been selected for the next year, which encompasses some of the Tacoma high schools. And yeah, I'm just excited about that.
Thank you, Kaitlyn.
Thank you.
I believe that Kaitlyn is a daffodil princess, yeah?
Yeah, congratulations.
I just add, it's not, I mean, it's fun, but it's also part of mental health and emotional health to have social events like dances, so.
Yep. So, okay. Well, thank you very much. And so we will go on to the committees. Director Leon, do you have a, anything to add?
Not at this time.
Okay. Director, Vice President Keating.
I still don't know where to look when people say that. So, let's see, it's been, I'm trying to remember, like, there've been a lot of things we've done, but kind of like the highlight, many of us were at the WASDA conference. And we, so Director Leon and President Bonbright and I and Superintendent Garcia and Director Laura Allen all presented. I didn't forget anybody, did I?
Nope.
And we presented on the whole child, and it was a really engaging session. And it was really fascinating to talk to other superintendents and board directors from around the region and across the state just around how we're doing approaching SEL work and how they're, either what they're doing and/or like learning, we were learning from each other, so that was really interesting. And then I want to give a huge shout out. I actually got to present with, there is an LGBTQ PLC team, which is made up of Tacoma TPS counselors. And one of the counselors, Jake Clausen, who is at Lincoln, Jake and I presented, and it was the first on safety and inclusion for LGBTQ students. And it was the first in-person presentation, I think, in at least two years. So that was kind of fun, and it was a really highly intended event. And we had the support of Laura Allen as well. And it was, we had a really engaging conversation just around best practices, around challenges, and on inclusivity and how to even do that work, and how to help move people along and meet people where they are. And I actually, Superintendent Garcia and I went, was that last week, where we went to the Superintendent Legislative Event? Was that just a week ago?
I think so.
Oh my God, I can't keep track. And I actually heard from a handful of people that attended that event who were in the training that Jake and Laura and I did. And it was really meaningful to hear back from people just as important, like, about the importance of the practices and how to do that. So, that was really exciting, and I'm always gonna like, give a shout out to our TPS counselors because they're my heroes. And then, trying to think, I'm sure there's like lots of other things, but the other thing yesterday was the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting, which, one of the things that we were talking about, Tom Chak, oh my gosh, I just forgot his title. I'm sorry, Tom, if you're in the room. Can you remind me of Tom's?
Tom is one of our superheroes, is the Director of Maintenance and Operations.
Thank you. But we were, he was sharing out about the inclement weather preparation and just like how, how they're preparing for it, and then just the number of different people throughout the district and the city, and, and how collaborative the process is, and really how challenging the process is to, because weather reports, I mean, I don't know, we have three different weather apps in my house, and they all say different things. So, I just, I know that it's a really challenging thing when we have inclement weather, weather, and there's school closures or delays. It really does disrupt the community. And it was just an interesting thing to hear how, how much effort goes into planning, something that sometimes it feels like you're shaking a Magic 8-Ball for. So, anyways, I just wanted to give a shout out to Tom and the folks that participate in that committee. And, I don't know, and then, oh, President Bonbright and I have been collaborating on the Board Retreat next Tuesday as well. So, some really, looking, really looking forward to that.
Thank you. Director Stroger.
No, no real report other than to say that this is now my favorite time of year outside of the start of school and graduations, basketball season is upon us. So you will find me in multiple gyms this season and over the next few months, starting tomorrow, Mount Tahoma versus Lakes. I'm excited to see that, I heard their, my team's pretty good this year, so I'm looking forward to checking that out. So, definitely my favorite time of year, looking to support our student athletes on that front, so, that's it.
Fantastic, thank you. And Director McElroy, do you have anything to, to add since you've been, since you've won your election?
Well, yeah, I will say that as someone who's recently elected, and I know the public is watching, and it'll be rewatched later, and we have our TEA representative here, I just want to say that sometimes when you walk into a position, you're handed cards on a table that you did not shuffle, that you did not sort, and that you did not buy. So, like, back at item 16.2 about the CCTVs and it being implemented in all of the high schools and only one of our middle schools, I think it's really important that we, as a board and as a community, we're really thoughtful about what we're doing and the adultification of students and that we're aligning all students at the same age, at the same place. So, having First Creek Middle School lumped in with a lot of high schools, it can come off to parents and teachers and those of us who walk the community as a targeting. But again, I do understand its value, and I'm grateful to hear that all middle schools will be receiving this in the future. But again, cards I did not buy, I did not shuffle. So I think that's really important that people start tuning into these, start listening, start getting involved. The subcommittee work is really important. Parents and community have said that we have not been transparent. And I think it's really cool to sit here now amongst the most transparent people who want everyone to be involved. So, I would just say that I'm really grateful to be here, and if anyway I can lean my voice to supporting this board and supporting the transparency to our students and to our families, I will lean into that heavily.
Okay, thank you.
President?
Yeah.
Is it okay if I make a comment on?
Yes, absolutely.
I was just thinking about, just safety and with regard to getting your vaccination. So, the Omicron variant is already here. It's unclear if it's actually worse with regard to severity of illness, but it's still gonna be a similar illness, most likely. So, just a plea for everybody who is considering getting the vaccine, and please get that. And I want to congratulate the schools on having a very low number of kids and staff with transmission. Being positive, it happens, but it's really infrequent, and that's a testament to the hard work we're doing in other districts similar to ours that have these protocols. Infections don't happen in the schools, they're happening in the community. But good work keeping kids in school, learning.
Okay, thank you. So I will wrap it up with what I've been up to the last month or so. And I, I just want to say we're still moving forward with the Joint Municipal Action Committee, JMAC, and Director Stroger is on that with me. And we're doing the follow-up to the Big Summit of 60 and, and got the, the report, which was pretty amazing. And so I will give, Tracy, I'll, I'll send you the link, and maybe we can put it in the minute so people can go out and see the documents that have been created by that, by that event. And I think it'll be interesting to folks. So, that's that, and we have another meeting actually tomorrow, so, for JMAC. So, that's that, and we have another meeting actually tomorrow, so, for JMAC, it's always the day after these meetings, so it's, it seems like a long time before I present, but, and then I just wanted to mention that one of our, our key partners is Graduate Tacoma, and there were a couple of meetings that I've been, that I've gone to in the past month or so that I just wanted to call, call up, because I, you know, it's the great work that this group does, but the first one was the Cradle to Career Livestream Event, which was really interesting, because they, the panel, they hosted a panel, Palmer Scholars, you know, who provides, which provides scholarships to the, you know, after, what happens after kids graduate. They had a, a group of Palmer School graduates who had, who came back and talked about what it was like post-high school, and what they wished they'd known and what they did know, and all the things that they learned from TPS, they were all TPS grads, and it was a fascinating conversation, and I, and I just, it just reminds me that, you know, this work doesn't end, you know, we, we start with this, the young children, you know, before they come to our school, as family members to other kids that are in our schools, and then once, once the kids leave, you know, they're, you know, once TPS, always TPS, right? So, it was just really interesting, and I really value that, the work of this organization. Then, then just yesterday, I think it was just yesterday, God, it's been a busy week, they had their advocacy, Graduate Tacoma Advocacy Breakfast to see their legislative agenda, which aligns, you know, very nicely with some of the work we're doing, so that's, that's good, so I just thought I'd call that out. But, and of course, we had the presentation at WASDA, which was fashion, it was wonderful doing it with colleagues, and the superintendent, and of course, Laura Allen, because she's such a great spokesperson for this project. And the questions in the group were, it was amazing in the audience, the people were, a lot of them were superintendents who came and wanted to, to hear what we were doing and how they could do it, which is always heartening, and there was a lot of enthusiasm, so I'm really pleased and proud that we could, could share our, what we've learned and learned from others at the same time. But the last thing I want to share was this really cool thing I did on Monday, which is I, I don't know if you guys know about this, this organization, you probably do, but it's called the Tacoma Youth Marine Foundation, and they invest in making, providing students' youth with educational opportunities on the water. We live on, on a body of water, and there are a lot of adults in our community, but there are a lot of students who have never actually been out on the water on a boat. And so they have a boat that's Coast Guard certified called the Charles Curtis, Charles and Curtis, and I went out with Sammy, one of our high schools, has a marine biology class, and so I went out for a two-hour tour of Commencement Bay, it wasn't a tour like a, you know, casual tour, it was, this was a marine biology class, and they were going out and capturing, taking water samples, and there were 24 students, and they all had a task, and you've never seen anything like it, they get onboard and they get their, you know, vests on, their life vests on, and then they all have their, the stations that they go to do, and it was absolutely fascinating, these kids were asking great questions, and, and they had answers when I was asking, and so they, they take water samples from the same spots, all over the, three different spots all over Commencement Bay, and they have actually put together a list of data that is, that goes back several years, that is actually, you know, on par with what they do at universities with oceanography programs. And so, some of these kids are going from, from here to getting actual school programs and, and maybe summer jobs, and anyway, so this is a very exciting group that we're working with, and we're partnering with them, I'm trying to help them, they're, they're getting a new, a new boat that's bigger and be able to have more students, and we're hoping to open it up to, to more than just, right now it's Soda and Sammy, and I'm not sure if there's, if there are others, but we're trying to, to get them to have a bigger ship so that more people can go, and I just think it's exciting that this is a possibility happening in our community, and I want to thank them for all the work they do to keep providing these unique opportunities for kids that live in a community to have the experiences that otherwise they might not be able to have. So, thank you to Monique Valensuiza for the, all of her enthusiastic energy around this project, and, and I love that we partner with them, so. Okay, so that is it for me, and I just want, let's, last item on the agenda is the, item 20, the announcement of the next regular board meeting, which is January 13th, 2022, 6:00 PM, it will be a business meeting, and we are having a board retreat next Tuesday as Director Keating mentioned on the 14th, from 5:30 to 8:30, or eight, something like that. Anyway, so, with having said that, and there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Can I take a picture of you? How you doing?
Not as bad as I thought.
Oh, good.
Very much, but I'm gonna just dash out of here, so.
Yeah.